I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
Here.
Gary? Dan?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Sherri?
Here. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
Clemish?
No.
And I do not either. Item number four is approval of the agenda. One thing I do want to clarify is that item number 15, which states proposed second amendment to motion for Reich and RV Park PUD rezone, is changing only the minutes for November 17th. It is not changing the motion itself. It is re-changing the recording in the minutes itself. So, any other notations on the minutes or amendments? I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Joe, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. This is the time for public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment? All right.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Rumsey and I live at 122 Lake Shore Drive, Utica, South Dakota. Sorry that I always have to type this out, guys, but I don't trust my train of thought nor my emotions, so I apologize for that. Honestly, when I sat down to write what I wanted to say tonight, the words have escaped me. I feel that my husband, my neighbors, and I have supplied many facts regarding zoning, rezoning, ordinance, and amendments. That words have now become fairly meaningless. However, I cannot sit back and keep quiet about our situation because the decisions made in this room by all will permanently affect our lives and the lives of our neighbors. We have now been to a number of planning and zoning meetings as well as county commission meetings. What I have learned is this: question everything and hold people accountable for their actions. We have watched as rezoning has passed from commission to commission without proper vetting and that the ordinance that govern each commission be glossed over and not followed because that is what we have done in the past, so that's what we're going to do again now. How can something that has been done wrong repeatedly make it right? It has been frustrating and disheartening, to say the least. My husband is the facts guy, so I guess I'm going to tell you what's on my heart. As commissioners, the Development Service Director and Chief Deputy State's Attorney, all we have ever asked is that you do your job to the best of your ability as governed by your job title and ordinance which govern you. I apologize if we have been overzealous in our emails, phone calls, and conversations with many of you. But please understand, we are fighting for our homes and therefore our lives. Where things stand at this moment, our home is on the verge of losing its property value as well as resale value. Would not each of you, if this were truly honest with yourselves, be fighting for your homes as well? Wouldn't you want to make sure that the people in charge were following the ordinance to the letter? My husband and I are all for development, but development for the betterment of all, not just one man. I have read and reread your ordinance, and although they are a work in progress, it seems, they clearly state that they are supposed to protect and guide the physical, social, economic, and environmental development of the county, protect the tax base, lessen governmental expenditure, prevent the crowding of land, conserve and develop natural resources, and promote the general compatibility with adjacent properties. I feel unfortunately that you guys have failed us on these items. I know nothing I have said tonight can change our current situation as the rezoning has passed, but I do pray that going forward, all parties will follow the ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, would you like to come up?
Good evening, commissioners. I am here tonight to inform the commission that on Wednesday, December 7th, at approximately 4:50 PM, my beautiful wife and I, Carrie and I, submitted on behalf of ourselves and 58 other registered Yankton County voters to the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office a 7-8-28, which is a State's Attorney's appeal from action of county commissioners. This petition highlighted four arguments pertaining, oh, sorry, four arguments proving the motion of November 17th, 2020, to rezon Nedved's addition was not executed properly and requires reconsideration to protect Mr. Evans and the county from potential litigation. I have provided a copy of the petition for your review. You'll see there behind my statement. For conservation purposes, the appendices were not provided. The complete petition is being held by the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office, if you would like to see it. Our first argument is the commission did not follow proper procedures approving the application to rezon the property in question. We offer the following evidence. One, previous PUD rezones were done in two motions. One motion to approve the plan submitted to the commission by planning and zoning, and one motion to approve the rezoning. This did not occur in this instance. In fact, Mr. Clemish made a motion to approve but did not specify if he was making a motion to approve the plan submitted by planning and zoning or if he was making a motion to approve rezoning the property in question. Two, the county's paper application form states the application would be handled in Board of Adjustments, which did not, was not done in this instance. Three, the passed motion is to date not clearly defined and understood by the Planning-Zoning Administrator and some commissioners. This is evidenced by the fact that I have been provided two very different interpretations of the motion. Specifically, on or about December 2nd, Mr. Healy and Mr. Vedder assured me Mr. Evans had to meet the conditions of the motion by December 17th or it would revert back to R2 zoning. But, on December 4th, Mr. Vedder told me Mr. Evans only had to meet the conditions prior to applying for a building permit. Four, a defined plan of the development cannot be provided to me by Planning and Zoning Administrator. This is evidenced by when I asked Mr. Vedder to produce the plan for review, he told me the plan was every plan found in the packet provided the county commission. Which I think, if you look, there's four plans. There's a fuzzy, grainy picture of the southernmost peninsula, which is the plan that was approved by planning and zoning, and excludes the six acres to the northwest corner. There's a plan that offers pictures of roads and campsites and houses with little definition of locations. There's a plan that has 32 copies of my house spread out and across the property in question and some on Bob Chop's, so I don't know if he knows he's going to have houses potentially on his property. So, I'd ask you to review and hopefully someone can provide that plan. Our second argument is the presented plan failed to meet requirements set forth by the current ordinance and the comprehensive plan. In the interest of your time, I only offer four of the many examples provided in the petition. One, the approved plan lacked elevations and contours. Two, the approved plan by Planning and Zoning did not include the northwest six acres of the property. Three, the plan approved by Planning and Zoning Commission only mentioned septic and water and electric in the key and were not, which, and none were clearly identifiable in the plan. Four, the only measurable specifications provided in the plan approved by Planning and Zoning Commission were the roads would be 30 feet wide and campsites would be 30 feet long by 50 feet wide. Our third argument was the conditions identified in the motion to approve modified the plan approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. Pursuant to Section 1719, those changes needed to be reconsidered by Planning and Zoning Commission before approval by the county commission. Section 1719, County Commission Amendment and Rezoning Duty states, "The county commission may amend, supplement, change, modify, or repeal any regulation, restriction, boundary, or enforcement position proposed, established in zoning ordinance or zoning map. The county commission shall," which in legal terms means you have to, "forward a copy of the proposed change to the Planning Commission for public review and comment pursuant to Section 1809." Clearly, the conditions put forth in the motion to approve the rezoning changed the plan in several ways, including but not limited to changing the roads from 30 feet to 35 feet wide. I believe any reasonable reading of Section 1719 mandates those changes required the plan to be reconsidered by Planning and Zoning prior to approval of the county commission. Our final argument was the final motion to approve the plan was ambiguous and not consistent with the spirit of the discussion between all parties leading up to the motion that was made and ultimately approved. This is evidenced by the fact, one month and two county commission meetings later, we are still trying to clear up the motion to approve. Specifically, on November 17th, at or about 3 hours and 11 minutes into the meeting, Mr. Clemish offered a motion which discussed a continuance to December 10th to allow Mr. Evans time to develop a better defined plan as requested by nearly all of the commissioners in that meeting. It was determined that was not possible due to procedural schedules set forth by ordinance Section 1719.
Mr. Rumsey, you've had six minutes, so I'm going to have to cut you off.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please read the rest of it.
Thanks, please, one, 30 seconds.
My request for being up here. In closing, we feel we have submitted solid arguments that compel Yankton State's Attorney's Office to process the appeal actions 20509C in hopes the planned unit development and rezoning application will be sent back to Yankton County Planning Commission for reconsideration. As of tonight, it is our understanding the petition was received by the State's Attorney's Office, reviewed, and sent to the Attorney General's Office for consideration. The Attorney General's Office summarily sent it back to the State's Attorney's Office stating it was a State's Attorney's issue and they must review it to determine its merit and proceed accordingly. As, we humbly ask you to review the petition, and if you feel it has merit, ask the State's Attorney to process the appeal and grant our request for the application to be reconsidered properly. Thank you.
Bill Tackey?
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak my piece a little bit. What I have in mind here is part of the motion that Dan made at the meeting, at the last meeting of the commission meeting, was to have Mr. Evans be in contact with landowners a mile below the lake. I have not talked to him. I visited with everybody for four miles on down, and they're all of a consensus that there is a major water problem that does exist also. And that by adjusting the lake, he talks 14 to 17 foot level, 13 feet is flood stage, which creates a problem when you're running 14 to 17 feet. So, with the watershed being, there's a feedlot, two gravel pits, a county, well, you've got a county bridge, and then the township has put a lot of culverts in. I'm speaking on behalf. I haven't talked to him. I'd like to discuss things with him, but as part of your outline was for him to be in touch with me, and nobody has talked to him. Mr. Kralacek also, he's right there, and I don't, I don't know about Bob, but I doubt he has either there. So, that was my concern, and that's what I would like to bring up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Bob?
Good evening. Yes, I guess I'd like to reiterate what Bill stated. You know, it was my understanding from that meeting that Mr. Evans would be in contact with us and work out a plan and, and let us know what he was thinking and everything, and I have not heard anything from him. Not, not a text, not a phone call, not anything. So, yeah, I guess I'd like you guys to, you know, really consider this, give this a lot of thought, and go through the proper procedures and do the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? All right, public comment is closed. Item five is a supplemental budget hearing.
And those are, they've been advertised, and the supplements are $173,000 for juvenile detention, $400,000 for the E911, and $339,000 for the jail building. And I just need a motion to approve them.
The E991, that was for the, was it for the antennas or what was that for? And that comes out of the E911 fund that we can only spend on projects like this?
Do you need a specific motion with numbers in it or just a motion to approve the budget supplements?
You can, just a motion to approve the budget supplements as presented.
Patty, the jail building supplement, is that coming out of the jail fund that we have established or is that coming out of the general fund?
Well, the, the supplements are coming out of the general fund going into those.
Okay. Do we have funding? We have jail building specific funding?
Yep, we have cash for it.
Is, could that come out of that instead or is this?
No.
Okay, it has to come out of the jail fund?
Yep. Because budget and revenue is, they're too different.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I know we had that fund, and we did spend down quite a bit on it when we re-renovated the women's portion of the jail.
You have to have budget to spend the revenue, and there's no budget, we don't budget for that jail building.
So, the dollars are coming from the jail fund?
Yeah.
It's just we didn't budget for them?
Understood, yeah. Well, we don't have much choice but approve it, so I guess I'd make a motion to approve. Do you want numbers?
No, just as presented.
As presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the supplemental budgets as presented. Further discussion?
I'd just like to point out once again that juvenile detention is a major item in the, in the county budget, $173,000. Over.
Sherri, since this is a hearing, do we have to ask for public input?
Certainly, if anyone would like to make a comment on this. Okay, there being no, no interest, we'll close the public comment for the hearing. Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Gary? Don?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. Moving on to item number six, approval of minutes from December 1st of 2020. Are there any amendments to those minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve the December 1st, 2020 minutes.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the minutes for December 1st. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Minutes are approved for December 1st. Item number seven, claims will take first. Patty did hand out one late claim that is printed for you.
Move approval. With the addition of the handout, I guess.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the claims as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Claims are approved as presented. Auditor, treasurer, report, and pool cash reports, we'll take those together.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to approve the auditor, treasurer, and pool cash reports. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We have a juvenile detention agreement. So, this would be with Minnehaha County. Are there any concerns with the agreement as it's presented? $244 per bed per day is the new rate for 2021.
That's a 3% increase over what we pay this year.
Don't think we have much choice.
Well, considering we cannot house them, that is correct. And I'm assuming it's the same that we've had in the past. I scanned through it and it didn't, didn't seem anything different, so.
Move approval of the juvenile detention agreement with Minnehaha County as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve the juvenile detention center agreement with Minnehaha County as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four to one. Next is the South Dakota Department of Health contract. And this is the yearly contract with the South Dakota Department of Health.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the South Dakota Department of Health contract for 2021. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. And that concludes item number seven, and we are on to item number eight, COVID-19 emergency resolution. Mr. Scherschlick?
Good evening. I'm here tonight to try to get, to pass this resolution from you guys in support of what's going on with the real world of COVID. Within this here, I don't know, I can read it, but there's not really a whole lot of, I want to emphasize that there isn't. We're not closing anything down, we're not restricting, we're just asking. So, with the normal COVID-19 emergency health declaration, whereas the COVID-19 respiratory disease can result in serious illness and death, is a new strain of coronavirus and is yet previously identified by humans and easily spread from person to purchase. As of March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 as a pandemic. And as of December 15th, today, of 2020, in Yankton County, there are currently 2,241 positive cases, seven, or there have been, excuse me, that many cases, 1,791 recovered, 4,000, excuse me, 433 active cases currently, and 17 deaths in Yankton County, state of South Dakota. And whereas the Center of Disease Control and Prevention recommends the actions and preparation and mitigation of the community transmission of COVID-19, including social distancing, measurings, and wearing masks. And whereas in the COVID-19 cases, hospitalization of deaths across the United States are rising, and where with the cold weather moving in, people spending more time indoors, and the holidays approaching, steps are needed to slowly spread the COVID-19. Whereas wearing masks, staying six feet apart, avoiding crowds, washing your hands oftenly are steps essential for protecting against the COVID-19. Whereas wearing a mask helps protect others in our community and the public setting, including public transportation, at the event of gatherings and anywhere you will be around other people. And whereas a COVID outbreak, COVID outbreak and efforts of the extreme risk, the person-to-person transmissions throughout Yankton County significantly impacts the life and health of Yankton County residents and is a public disaster that affects the public peace and health and safety. And whereas pursuant to South Dakota codified law 7-18A-8, the adoption of this resolution may take effect immediately for preservation of public peace, health, or safety. Now therefore be resolved that the Yankton County's commission, as a result of this noted situation, does hereby adopt the following. A proclaims that a state of emergency remains in Yankton County, South Dakota, and by the recommendation of the Yankton County Emergency Management Department and the Yankton County Health Board encourages Yankton County residents and all the visitors to follow CDC guidelines and social distancing and wearing a mask when out in public in an effort to respond to recovery of the COVID-19 pandemic. Adopted, blah, blah, blah. And so on and so forth. So, like I say, it's, it's something that I think is very important that we keep recognizing the urgency of doing different things to protect. You know, the vaccine is out yesterday, but we've got a long word ahead of us before we're getting rid of this kind of stuff. So, but this is just another step for us as a community and as a county to encourage people to do the different things, safety things.
I think it's important to maintain vigilance, you know, complacency builds after a while.
Right.
Everybody wants to get back to our daily lives, but not quite there yet. Do you, how long does this vaccination last? Have you heard? I know different ones last longer, but is there a lot of information out there?
No, there is, we really don't know of anything. Once you get the series, how long it's going to last.
Sure. And I hope I'm wrong, but we could have another year of this pretty easily, so I appreciate the vigilance.
Paul, I think, I think when you read through the resolution, you said 17 deaths. Resolution says 15, is that an update, 17?
There's 17 as of today.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we had, from March to December 1st, we had 10. And then in the last, you know, 15 days, we've had seven more, almost as many as we've had in the whole past year.
Yeah, in the last month and a half, we've probably had over 300 positive cases, just bang, bang, bang. We had one day, two weeks ago, Saturday, it was 140 cases. But, then our numbers have kind of dropped back down again. But I think, you know, we don't know why, why they went down. I have an opinion on that, but again, my opinion is always, is good, because a lot of people are just done not taking tests anymore unless they absolutely have to. So, those numbers will go down, because if you look at the numbers, every, every day I put this out on Facebook, and the numbers don't reflect, I mean, they reflect what's going on, but our counts dramatically have dropped as far as positives, negatives, recovered, all that stuff is changing, and I just don't look like as many people are getting. I know Sherri, you do a lot more with what you do, and I mean, I don't know if you come up with the same conclusion, but I don't think as many people are being tested at this time. And a lot of people have gotten.
People assume that they're happy and they're just.
They're good, they're good to go.
They just don't want to know.
So, anyway, I bring this before you, and, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, this is, is a nice display of what's going on in Yankton. I do want to make note, though, like, you know, when people see 17 deceased, there's people that say, oh, that's not so bad, or whatever, and I think it's important to know that, that our hospital in town has seen much more than 17 deaths directly related to COVID, and they serve a large area. My wife works up at the hospital, and she actually records all the deaths and sends them to the state, and it's, it's hard on her just typing the names in. The nurses that are working in ICU and are working in the emergency department and working on the COVID floor have seen much more than the 17, and it's, it's exhausting them, and it is, it is emotionally and physically. They watch these people struggle and, and, you know, literally on their deathbed with no family members. And they are that family member and that, that emotional support, and it is draining them. I've heard every excuse in the book as to why not to wear masks, some, you know, it, whatever you read maybe, or what. I actually asked my wife if there was anything she wanted to relay, and she gave me a list of some things, and I'll, you know, touch on some of them, but it's really not anything that we haven't heard. It really boils down to there's, certain people are obstinate to being told what to do. It really boils down to there's certain people are obstinate to being told what to do. There are certain people who, you know, chalk this up as a, an infringement on their personal freedom. You know, I just want to say, stop being so selfish. And think about the people in the, in the health communities, our nurses and doctors that are dealing with this, and how it's affecting them. If you don't care if you get COVID and get sick, that's fine, but you're affecting other people too, so. Take it serious.
If you get a chance, I don't know if you've seen the Facebook post, Sherri Hoffman did a Facebook Live with one of the ICU, ICU nurses from Sacred Heart. And I thought it was very well, very good, you know, hearing it from them. I wish we were, I wanted to get more, but it's, a lot of people just don't want to talk right now yet, so. But there are a lot more that are willing to do a story, but like I said, it's going to take some time, because it is doing a lot of, it's a lot of pain on their, on their behalf.
I think the other thing, people think that nurses who work in ICU or in the emergency, emergency department deal with death all the time, and they're kind of numb to it. And that's, nothing could be further from the truth. It's pretty rare when they see death on a normal day. And this is definitely taking its toll on them. You don't get numb to it.
I'm going to ask for public comments at this time. Would anyone care to make a public comment? Okay, there being none, we'll close public comment. Any other comments from the commissioners before we entertain action on this?
Our Board of Health recommends this.
Yep, they signed off on it. They are, they are.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of resolution number twenty-nine.
Second that motion.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve resolution number twenty-nine concerning the novel coronavirus emergency health declaration and asking the public to take precautions. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, just like Paul says, we're not closing anything down, we're not forcing anybody to do this. It's, you know, basically just a reminder that take this serious and remain vigilant, so. Follow CDC guidelines.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary? Don?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. All right, we are moving on to item number nine, county insurance. Roger Smith.
Thank you very much for your time. You know, I've been doing this a long, long, long time. And there's got to be a better way, I think, to do this, talk about county insurance. You're not buying a tractor, you're not buying a backhoe. Now, this is more important than that, and it takes, I think, more time than is given to me or whoever, when the time comes along to do this. I know you can't meet as a group, talk about insurance, but one or two people could get together with whomever, get a plan, and put this out to bid, or don't put it out to bid, or, you know, just, there's got to be a better way. For a long time, I have and our office has done for the county commission the best we think that can be done. You've got an excellent insurance company insuring you. They have great service. I've never heard a complaint about their litigation, about their attorneys, and there's been a lot of that going on. Nobody's ever complained to me that they're good, bad, or otherwise. I think our office gives tremendous service to you. If somebody needs something, I, I'm there, or we're there to do what needs to be done. But that said, I, I give you a number, and I'll give you a number tonight. And you know what kind of goes in there, you've got some liability, you've got some property coverage, you've got your vehicles covered and so forth, but it's, it's what I think should be done. And I think I know what to do, and I know how to do it, and when to do it, and try to get the best price for you to do it. But I have no problem with that, not a burden, I have no problem with that issue. But, and, and maybe, I, I think other counties maybe put it out to bid, and now you're talking about bidding like a tractor, and the low bid gets it, and you go about your business. The problem with your insurance program, there's only two or three outfits that can do it. There's not ten, there's not twenty. So that's my two cents worth. I thought this for a long time, and I'm getting old, and I don't want to make sure I don't ever say it. I'm going to pass these out, so these are the numbers.
Thank you.
And I don't have a bunch of sheets because.
Nice and simple, one page.
That's Roger. I delivered Patty a couple weeks ago, worker compensation, which is a very important piece of your insurance, and that has gone down some. It's the only thing that's gone on good with the county insurance program, is the work comp. It's, it's, it's good, it's lucky, it's safety procedures, I don't know what's going on, but it's good. It's, it's working very well. By the time I say that, something will happen, but it has gone, and it went down. The insurance on your property liability and so forth has gone up some. Easy answer, very simply, is litigation, lawsuits. Just for information, I got one today in the, in the mail from the state attorney's office. It's three years old. It's one that goes back three years. And I mean, it's, this never ends. And I don't think it's ever, it's probably going to end in my lifetime, but it is what it is. But anyway, that's what's caused your pricing increase. So these numbers, they're not to the penny, but they're pretty damn close. And so it's up about 10%, 12% this policy, the work comp's down, this is up. The total of them, the total of them is about the same as you paid last year. One's down, one's up, so the total. So this is higher than the number last year, but it's been offset somewhat by the reduction in workers' compensation. So your account, your insurance account with the Yankton agents is most of the same. Just, I want to mention, I know it was a big deal last year, you had a $25,000 deductible added to your county commission policy. We just had, this is how it works, you're scared about, I mean, not scared, we're upset about the $25,000 deductible, just had three claims, I think, got closed. One, they paid $1,400 on, one they paid $2,000 on, and one they paid, not yet, but four or five thousand. I mean, so the $25,000 deductible's sitting there, but that doesn't mean every claim's going to have a $25,000 hit. One had a $1,400 hit. So a big, you know, not, not a, not a, not a small deal, but it's not a big deal. And one had like a $2,000 value. So, but there is that case out there where it's just going to have a $25,000 deductible. And with the claim history you've had, we could argue all we want, but they're not going to change it at this point in time. Hopefully, some of these claims will work their way off, and then things will change. You know, I've been in this long enough, the only other time I can remember this kind of stuff happening was the old, the late Bob, Bob Chavis, state's attorney. We had a lot of issues, and a lot of stuff going on. And we thought there were some claims that weren't going to be paid, but you know, every claim that I've ever had, in a long, long time I've been here, has been handled. It's never been denied, it's never been argued, I'm sure, never been denied. We thought we had one with the Bob Chavis situation, that's been a long time ago. Bob been passed away quite a while ago. We found out there was coverage, and it was, it was defended and, and handled. But, but all the claim activity we've had, unless you people know something, I don't know, because I don't get into your litigation meetings, nobody ever tells me anything about those, which is good. I just think things have worked out very well with all the commotion going on. So anyway, here's the numbers, they're a little higher than last year. We've, we've done about all we can do with deductibles, we've done about all we can do with taking some conflict collision away, we've done about all we can do with, with most of the program. Just cut here and there to keep it at a reasonable level. But you're still talking about a lot of money, and it's a big deal. It's a real big deal. I'd answer any questions. The South Dakota Pool will talk after this, and their numbers are much the same. I think they're a little higher or lower, but they're much the same. I don't know nothing, I don't know anything about their program, I know basically what it is. And that, basically EMC Insurance Company and South Dakota Pool, and then there's one other company that does a little bit of business, are the players in South Dakota. So you can't go wrong with one or the other. I think what's better than the other, but that's, that's my company, but not let, let her speak her piece. If anybody has any questions, I'd answer them. But I think whether I, whether I'm here or not here, or around or not around, or whatever, I just think there's got to be something different. Maybe a couple of insurance agents get together with, in something, and I, I just, I don't know. So.
Roger, you said the workman's comp's going to be in addition to this, is that correct?
The workman's comp's in there, and it's eighty-eight thousand, I think.
Okay, is that what's under equipment?
No, it's not in here.
It'll be an addition, okay.
Not in there.
Got it, thank you.
It's a separate billing, I billed that, because we had to get it paid, that's got to be paid by the end.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And this can take, take some time. Not a lot of time, but some time. And I hope, I hope I've done well by the county doing what I've done, and, and our office has done what we've done, I, I think we have. I just wish that some of this stuff would go away, and it'd be easier, we wouldn't have to talk about races, increases, and changes, and deductibles, and so forth. And maybe there'll be a time that'll come, I hope. Any questions, I'd answer. Otherwise, I'll sit.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, next, Lynn, is it Bren?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Good evening. I'm going to, can I just give these to you and you take? So there's a card and three brochures, for your information. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. My name is Lynn Bren, I'm the deputy director of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. We have presented you with a quote to provide to you your property and liability coverages for the upcoming coverage term. Before we kind of talk numbers and, and coverage, I just kind of want to give you a little, I know I've only got just a little bit of time, so I'll try to make this quick. For those of you who've heard me talk at county convention and stuff like that, you know, I talk fast, so if you've got questions, just let me know. Briefly, the, the Risk Pool's been around for about thirty, thirty-two years, almost thirty-three, actually. We were formed in 1987 in response to a hardening commercial market. Commercial insurance companies were just not really in a position to provide coverage to public entities. Our legislature saw the need and created what we refer to as the Enabling Statutes, which then enabled similarly situated entities, public entities like yourselves, to come together and create risk-sharing pools. So we, there's the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, the state has the People Fund, school boards has the Associated School Boards of South Dakota Property Liability Fund, and then the Workers' Compensation Fund, we're all formed under those statutes. The SDPA is, is different than regular commercial insurance, because we are more proactive. So we focus a lot on risk management and loss control activities. We have tons of resources available to our members, and two of the brochures that you have, the Employment Practices Hotline and the Government Practices Hotline, are two of our most widely used resource. They are used or intended to be a resource for your state's attorney and your other officers who may need some assistance, asking some of those questions where they're just not 100% sure, not ever meant to replace, but to enhance and maybe help guide with some questions. We feel that risk management is important, because in a risk-sharing pool, we're all sharing our risks, and if everybody is more prepared and has more tools available to them to recognize risk issues, the better we are at controlling those, and if not controlling them, at least mitigating them, so we can resolve those issues that we might be facing. Some of the ways that the Risk Pool has helped its members just in the past few months, this COVID-19 thing was something that many of us had no idea what to do. We were faced with closures, we're faced with how to keep our, our communities safe, how to keep our employees safe. And the SDPA, recognizing that there were a lot of questions, we engaged our panel council, and we were giving advice to our members as far as elections, what should it look like? What can you do, what can't you do? And still protect the rights of all the people involved, but also keeping them safe. We had, I think, over eight weeks, we had at least weekly blasts out to our members of information, panel council advice as far as some things that members could do and not do, which I think was, was pretty helpful. And, and certainly you can talk with some of your fellow commissioners across the state, and, and just, we have, I want to say fifty-seven of the sixty-six counties that are members of the pool so far. So they can share with you their experiences. On our Board of Directors, we have three county representatives, plus Bob Wilcox with the South Dakoty, South Dako, ah, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. He's a permanent member of our board, so you're always going to have some, some representation there. We are developing some jail summits, because along with COVID, we are seeing some jail training issues. We've got some social sensitivity issues that are coming, so these are some of the things that we'll be talking about and providing some training for our members. Marijuana is a big question now with the passing of that, with the last election. So those are things that, that we're working with our members and offering some advice and some information on. Resources, online training, we have three different online training platforms. One is specific to law enforcement, offers training for law enforcement officers, and also offers simple and model policies for law enforcement. And those are developed with our state specifically in mind, what's trending locally, what our statutes say, and stuff like that. So it's not just, you know, some guy sitting at the East Coast like, oh, this is what I think. Nope, this is developed for our people, for our location, and for us locally. And then we have FirstNet, which is now NeoGov, for an online training platform, and also does some administration of your, of your training. And then also Aurora Pictures does streaming. We work with Safety Benefits, so we also have live training opportunities. So like, if you've got people who need MSHA training, we offer that free to our members, and then they also offer it to non-members for a fee. So really, I mean, the resources and, and the help that we offer, we think kind of sets us apart from commercial insurance. At the end of the day, the coverages are very comparable. We have one coverage document that serves all our members. And I can tell you that before I came on board with the Risk Pool, I spent seventeen years at Claims Associates, who's our claims administrator handling claims for the Risk Pool. So if there's a question about coverage, those guys over there at Claims Associates usually call me, and I'm going to be your advocate. We're going to look for coverage, we're going to look for ways to, you know, kind of help you guys and, and take care of you the best that we can. Your, the quote for coverages was included in the packet. There are just a couple of things I wanted to highlight that didn't make it into the packet, but I feel are important to note. Under our governmental liability coverage, it also includes some cyber liability coverage. We have a $500,000 per occurrence limit and aggregate. It's not noted in there, but that is also, excuse me, it's included that at no extra charge. And that governmental liability line, that includes your errors and omissions and stuff like that. That might be a separate line item elsewhere, but that's where that is. Let's see. And then for property coverage, we have a blanket coverage, it's open peril unless excluded for real property. Currently, our members do not have a separate wind hail deductible. So what you've chosen for your deductible is, I say currently, because depending on how the property market goes, we may at some point in the future need to talk about that. But right now, we're really holding firm to the fact that the deductible is what we've chosen, and this is what we'd like to have our members take advantage of. Property services, I talked to you a little bit about loss control, we have Safety Benefits do property evaluation services to make sure that those values that are on your property are appropriate, because that's how your contribution dollars are calculated. And so we want to make sure you're not paying too much or too little based on the values that we have, that everybody is, is appropriately covered for what they've got. Included in the property line is what's called enhanced crime coverage, and that basically stands in the place of your fiduciary bonds as required by section three-five. It's a blanket, enhanced crime coverage, million dollar limit, no deductible. I think yours is right at seventy-eight bucks, covers all your full-time, part-time employees, your elected and appointed officials. So the only bonds it doesn't replace is your notary bonds. So one thing that. notary bonds. So one thing that isn't included that, if you did decide to join the pool, which I would be delighted to be able to be of service to the county, we would talk about, we would need to talk about some retroactive coverage, because that would take care of those claims that are out there that you don't know about, because our claims coverage would only take care of while you're in the pool. And your prior company probably has some what's called claims made exposures, absolutely appropriate. So we just want to make sure there's some coverage that will pick up claims that don't actually happen during our tenure, and that are still picked up under either the old coverage, or we've got some in place. So I've got some numbers for that. If you're, if that's something you're interested in talking about, if, if we're just off the market, then, then that's fine. I, I respect that, but.
What's your, what's your total cost? Is that, is that your total cost right there?
So that, yeah, that, that one forty-two number, that is the total cost after, so we gave you some credits. We did an interview with Patty, and then our Safety Benefits, they also did an interview with taking a look at some of the sheriff's information and stuff like that. So they gave you some loss control credits and law enforcement credits. In year two, you would qualify for a renewal credit, and then in year four, you'd get the loss ratio credit, assuming that your contribution to claims dollars fall under sixty percent ratio. The retro coverage, for three years of retro coverage, it'd be fifty-four thousand nine hundred, roughly, and for five years of retroactive coverage, right around seventy-one thousand one sixty-five.
The fifty-four thousand was for three years?
Yes.
And what was the, the five-year one?
Seventy thousand one sixty-five. It's going to change. We'll do a little rounding. And that would be just a one-time thing. So you'd pay that the first year, and then next year, your renewal would be just based on what we have for values for property, and then whatever your expenditures, budgets, stuff and things like that are for your liability. And we would work with Patty on the renewal packet each year, so.
So the training opportunities you guys have, do you, you also have like some HR training, correct, or, or something, or do you have a hotline for those?
Yep. So the Employment Practices Hotline is one of the brochures. So basically what that does, that's open to our members if they have any employment-related questions, hiring, firing, disciplinary action, FMLA, overtime, I mean, just pretty much.
That's included, does, does?
Yep. Yep. All of our members, we actually encourage them to take advantage of that because, so what we did is we implemented a deductible. So if you, if you don't call the hotline and a claim arises out of an employment situation, then we have a five-thousand-dollar deductible. But if you call the hotline and follow advice, it takes literally five minutes, then if a claim arises, then the deductible's waived. So it's super easy to, and we have, we have two panel counsel primarily, and then they have backups. We have one situated West River and one East River. So you actually have coverage from eight AM to six PM our time, because our West River attorneys would be there a little later, so.
This cyber liability, I, I know that's becoming an issue. I mean, we had our school district was hacked, and I believe it was Hutchinson County was hacked for some time. They were writing paper checks. So could you kind of tell us what the cyber liability is? Is it training? Is it?
So cyber liability, the coverage, we don't, right now, there's some, it's more the security issues. The training part of it, you'll find a lot of videos online about, that you can pass along to employees and stuff like that, about how to recognize phishing, how to recognize, honestly, a lot of it is just, hey, what's a valid email versus what isn't, and what you should be doing at work, and, and, because electronically, email is the easiest way for us to get hacked, for people to get into our system. So the cyber liability with the enactment of the notification statutes in twenty eighteen is when cyber became especially important for South Dakota, because previously, we had no notification statutes. There was no, if we got hacked and personally identifiable information was stolen, we didn't really have to do anything. But now we have statutes that say, yes, we have to notify, we may have to credit monitor. So what that coverage does is, we call our cyber coaches, and they tell us, okay, you, under this law, you have to do these five things, or nope, because the breach only went to here. Another big thing that is, that our public entities are starting to see is a lot of ransomware, and that's where this would get picked up also, is that ransomware. Our cyber coverage and our enhanced crime coverage actually work really well together, because we have had situations where we had some email phishing, where someone gets in and pretends to be somebody else. But then actually, we, we have some ACH deposits or, or transactions that actually are picked up on the crime coverage. So those work really well together, which is nice to make sure that you're kind of protected that way as well.
Any other questions?
Just looking at our two quotes, I notice one quote has a commercial umbrella, and I don't see that on, on yours. Is it in there, or am I missing it?
Nope. We do not offer an umbrella. So your limits are the limit, per occurrence. We do not have an aggregate limit. So if your limit is one million dollars, then you get one million dollars per occurrence for as many occurrences as you have. Some companies will write an aggregate where they'll say you have a million-dollar limit, but a two-million-dollar aggregate. And what that means is, for every claim they pay, it reduces the total amount of claims they will pay in one year. But no, we do not have an umbrella situation. If the county is interested in an umbrella, we would write that separate, but within the pool confines, we only write just whatever the limit is. So if you're wanting additional limits, if you want a higher per occurrence limit, we can take a look at that and get you some quote numbers for that. But we just quoted what you had per occurrence limit, what we had quoted last year, and then I believe that's what you also have continued on to this year, so.
So at this time, we probably need to assign two commissioners to look further into this, because I know from previous experience quoting different insurance companies, you have to be very careful.
Sure.
At what they're quoting, the limits, the property value, et cetera. So it's a very detailed overview of what's being presented, very similar to what Don just pointed out. So do we have two volunteers to do that?
A volunteer.
It's a very exciting topic.
Yeah.
It's not everybody's jam.
Yeah.
So would you, okay. So Dan and Don will sit down and go through these, and we're probably looking at our first meeting in January, second meeting at the latest, that we need to have some kind of conclusion on a comparison, and then the avenue we go down. Does that seem reasonable?
Sure.
Yes, sir?
Do you, do you have to do it before January?
Do you, well, I thought you had said earlier that it could slip a little bit, but do we need it before then?
Well.
It would be nice.
Well, it'd be nice, but who do you want to, January one or January two, who do you want to cover that claim?
Yeah. So then we need to know by our last meeting, the December twenty-ninth. So you guys have a little bit, we turn the, we turn the burner up a little bit on you. So we will put that on the last meeting agenda as well. I'll get a note here. Property liability.
Does Patty have your contact information to give?
Yep. In my, so on the card, on my card is our, my cell phone number, the two-five-four number. That's the best. If you've got questions, you can call, text, you can email me anytime. The, really, the only time I'm not going to be able to get back to you is times like this where I'm with members or, or potential members and stuff like that. Feel free to call. Roger is a great resource. I can, I can tell you that. My husband actually does insurance claims and has worked with Roger in the past also. So I have the utmost respect for Roger and his opinion. So, yeah, just let us know if you guys have any questions or if there's anything else we can help with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in. So that will be added to the December twenty-ninth agenda.
Is that a time of the day or something?
We have, it's a, the meeting starts at ten on the twenty-ninth. We don't have a specific agenda yet, but you will.
No, it's a.
Yep.
It'll be before, so they can.
So these two, yep, they need to get their stuff in a pile before then. So thank you. Next item, Mr. Hunhoff for the Historical Society. Thank you for waiting, sir.
Just got back from the town of Howard in the snow and up there. So isn't life great in Yankton County, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. I'll be brief and try to help you catch up a little bit. So I'm the Chair of the Yankton County Historic Preservation Commission, a creation of, of the commissioners. And we felt an op, responsibility, I think, to report to you guys most of the while, so this is a good opportunity for that. I'll give you a short report and then tell you why I'm here. You'll remember in, in November of twenty fourteen, several of us put a measure on the, on the, on the general election ballot to create a mill levy to support the Meade Museum project, which was really just getting underway, and it really needed a show of support from the community of Yankton. And it passed overwhelmingly. And, and that, and following state law, that you created our commission, and that mill levy went into, into effect. And the first monies came in twenty sixteen, and it's made a monumental difference to the Meade Museum. It's made all the difference. We needed that show of support. That showed the state of South Dakota, that the people, the local people supported it. It showed major donors that there was local support, and that there would be some ongoing support. And it, and it, and it showed foundations and, you know, big grant opportunities that Yankton County was serious about this. So it's, it's really made a difference, and it's created something really good for Yankton County. When you created the commission, you put, you named myself, Crystal Nelson, Roger Huntley, Ken Jones, and Jim Means to the commission, and we've been the commissioners ever since. As I said, the first monies came in twenty sixteen, and we've stayed true to the ordinance, and we've stayed true to the, to what we presented to the voters in twenty fourteen, that most of the money needs to go to that Meade Museum project. And we, we created a set of our own bylaws and put in there basically that over, at least ninety percent of the money should go to the Meade Museum, and that's what we've been doing. Some of the monies, some of the other monies, we have given some monies to the Kramer Kenyon House. You might remember they had a major need for, I think, furnace and air conditioning here a year or two ago. We've agreed to fund a walking tour brochure or history book that Nathan Johnson is finishing up for, for, pretty much for the city of Yankton. You'll remember, we got involved and, and, and created a memorial for Yankton, for, for Yankton County's only governor, only state governor. We had territorial governors, but we've only had one state governor, William McMaster, in the nineteen twenties, and he was the only, he was one of the only governors across South Dakota that was not recognized in his hometown with a memorial. So a couple of years ago, we went to work on that. Actually, we, we kind of put out the word on Facebook that we, we didn't know where our funds were going to be at yet at that time. So we actually put a kind of request out on Facebook for some help, and people of Yankton County, again, generously responded, and, and I don't think we needed any of our own levy money for that. I think that was paid by donations. We've, we've been kind of saving up money because we know there's a major need with the Lewis and Clark Theater. They need a new roof, which is a pretty major expense, and I think that's an important part of the community and a really important building. That building was the renovation project for the nineteen eighty-nine centennial for the, for Yankton County. So Yankton County citizens really saved that building, you might say, in nineteen eighty-nine, which is now, now like thirty-one years ago. And it needs, it needs a new roof, among, among other improvements. And we, we agreed to give us a substantial matching amount to that drive. Other possible projects that we could see ourselves getting involved in, I was just out in Mission Hill the other day. How many of you have seen the old Abraham Lincoln statue there? It sits, sits in a little park above, above that little pond. That was put there in nineteen oh nine by the Ben Osso family, by Abraham Lincoln Ben Osso, I believe. And it's really showing some age. It's really a, quite a piece of history and art. It's a life-size or bigger statue of Abraham Lincoln that was put there in nineteen oh nine, which was a hundredth anniversary of Abraham Lincoln's birthday. And it's a, you know, even though it sits in a very kind of remote part of the county, it, it's a really an important piece. Scott Lukin is going to take a look at that and tell us what it needs to, to at least preserve it, if not to improve it. We've tried, we've been trying to learn more about the historical markers around the county. A lot have disappeared. We're, we're working on a list of what markers were up at one time, and we've got a pretty good list of that. And we, we hope to eventually come up with some kind of a plan on, you know, which markers, if they've been lost, which ones probably should be replaced or restored. So those are the kind of things we're working on. We have also been able to get CLG status, which is a bureaucratic term, but a really big deal. That's Certified Local Government Status. I think Jim Means came to the commission a, a few months ago and spoke to you about that, and, and you gave us your approval. And now we are a CLG approved, so we can apply for new grant opportunities there. So, so we've been busy. The whole board has been here the whole time, and we thought it was a little new blood. It's always a good thing, right? So we, we did create a nominating committee to just look for some new people who, 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 who maybe just don't have the same old, same old group, you know, doing everything. So we looked for some new people, yet people who had an interest in history and historic preservation. And our nominating committee came up with two names, Greg Currie, the optometrist, who's always had a passion for history and takes, and he operates out of some old buildings on the west end of Third Street, and recently bought the, the beautiful old Harmeling House, Shannon Omen House, one of the most historic buildings, residential houses in Yankton. Greg is agreed to, agreed to serve. The second one would be Shanna Iberelli, and she's a, a young teacher here in town, Wayne's daughter, for those of you who know Wayne, and a, a young teacher who's just very interested in history and, and agrees that, you know, she's ready for public service. So they will, i, i, if, if you would make a motion to, to add those two people to the commission, they would, number one, replace Ken Jones, who says he would like to step aside. And also Crystal Nelson, the, the museum director. We thought we need the continuity of her, and if we're going to institute term limits, we, we thought we should move her to an ex-official position, a permanent ex-official position, so she wouldn't fall under the term limits that our bylaws create. So she would stay on the board as ex-official. So that's really all I have to say. I, I would like to just close by saying, you know, what, thanks to the support of the Yankton County Commission and the people of Yankton County, we have really created something special with the Meade Museum. And it goes way beyond historic preservation. It's, it's truly economic development. I just, in fact, I just saw a study the other day. I read another study that a vast majority of the tourists who come to South Dakota, and this is true of other, of the other states, but a vast majority of our tourists, I mean, some come for pheasants, and some come to see Mount Rushmore, and they come for fishing and lots of different reasons. The number one reason by far and away is history. They want to experience our history and our culture. And, and now we have, I think it's fine, a cultural museum is, any of the surrounding states, maybe any of the, in the western states, something we can really be proud of. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for supporting us. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you need a motion? I guess I'd move to appoint Greg Currie and Shanna Iberelli to the Historical Society Board.
And to make Crystal.
Do you need that motion?
I think we can do that from our bylaws.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I just was curious. Are, is that, are you adding to the board, or some?
Well, really, we're going to still have five, plus an ex-official.
Okay.
So we would have six, but still five voting members.
Okay.
Good question.
Did you second?
I didn't yet, but I will.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Healy, to approve the proposed new members to the Historic Board. Greg Currie and Shanna Iberelli?
Iber.
Iber, Iber. There we go. I knew I was going to mess that one up. Iber.
I know. Shanna rhymes, rhymes with banana. Shanna Banana. But I don't know what Iberelli rhymes with, so.
All right. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five-zero. You have new board members.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for the update.
And I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm the county member for the Meade Building, and just the passion that those people have for history and community knows no bounds. And if you guys haven't been out to the Meade Building lately, go out there and see, it has really some of the best things that Yankton has to offer. It's an amazing place. And thank, tell our appreciation to your board, too, for doing that.
There is a new exhibit, if you haven't seen it, opened July first, specifically about the state hospital, and the history of the state hospital, the, the history of the buildings, the people, and, and the care. They even talk about lobotomies, which is something that, you know, they don't always want to talk about anymore, but they even take up, and they talk about the world's greatest milk cow was out at the state hospital farm back in, I think, the forties or fifties. Quite a history. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Mr. Solacek, item number twelve, entrance applications.
We've got two separate applications here, both down along Gear Boulevard. So we'll talk about the White Crane Estates for, for the first one. It's just north of, I guess the street didn't show up on my map here, but you guys have the maps in front of you there?
Yep.
Just directly north of, on the west side of the road there, just directly north of the existing White Crane. the existing White Crane Estates. Another entrance there.
Is that the highlighted section line there?
Yep. Questions on that? I did put remarks in there for, because that will cross the bike path for the...
You're going to do concrete?
Concrete across the approach for the bike path and then also minimum of twenty-four inch.
That's at their expense?
Yes.
Are they going to pour that yet this winter or is that going to be some, is there a time that that's going to be done by?
When they do the approach.
Okay, so soon then, right? And they're responsible for that and when the concrete breaks up in twenty years, they're going to be the ones to do that?
They're responsible for the whole approach.
Got it. That's a, I think that's a wise decision to put concrete on the bike path there. Makes sense.
I'd move approval of the White Crane Estates application.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so this is the first one in the packet because the second one is also for White Crane.
Yep.
Whitetail.
Whitetail.
Oh, it's whitetail. Oh, got me there. I saw the white. Gotcha.
I'm halfway through, I thought. I missed that too, but yeah. So for the White Crane Estates application.
And I seconded that motion.
So I have a motion by Healy, a second by Clemish, to approve the entrance app for White Crane Estates. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Second one would be another entrance for Buck Street. It'd be for Whitetail Run. It'd be just south of, just this last year, some building shed got put up, storage units and stuff. It'd be in between there and an acreage there. Same deal there, concrete crossing for the bike path, minimum of twenty-four inch culvert.
I'd move approval for the Whitetail Run application.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, a second by Kettering, to approve the entrance app for Whitetail Run. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Then just a quick update with the department. You guys are still out working, working on the roads with the weather being the way it is. We completed crack sealing on 435, 301, and they're working on 300 Street, east-west left of the road right now. Also been working on some dirt work projects, cleaning some ditches out, and then also hand patching, I guess, so. So we're still, as long as the weather holds out, we'll keep plugging away.
It's going to be a white Christmas.
I hope not.
Whatever you're doing with the snowplows, keep it up because we need it.
All right. There you go. I didn't know if you needed to sign. All right. Thanks for hanging around, Mike. Next, we have item 13, Bay Cliff Estates, Lot 23.
You have one plat in front of you tonight, Lot 23 in Bay Cliff Estates, located in the west half of the south, 12.91 acres of the south half of the southwest quarter of Section 7, and in the west half of the west half of Section 18. Lying north of Highway 52, except platted areas known as Tramp's 7th Edition and except lots 1 and 2 of Parcel A, and further accepting parcels B and C McVeigh Edition, all being in Township 93 North, range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Healy, to approve the Bay Cliff Estates, Lot 23 plat. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Gary, did you want to vote aye or nay? All right, motion carries four zero. Aye, next on the agenda is also Mr. Vedder for discussion of chouses.
Just wanted to make you aware of, we had a request of, Chouse was built a few years back. It's currently at 4,320 square feet plus 200 square foot lean-to. Is now looking to add an accessory structure on the five acre piece in R1 also. And just wondering if there's any thoughts, concerns about starting down this trend of adding accessory buildings to a chouse and where everybody's at with that, if you're okay with that.
I don't know where to start. I think chouses in general probably need to be addressed. I don't know how, and I don't think anybody else does, and that's why it hasn't been addressed, but...
I think Gary and I discussed this in our thought processes, if a chouse is built, you know, consider that, and chime in here, Gary, as the primary residence, and then you could also possibly consider the aggregate footage. And if somebody wants to build another one, you know, that's compared, or, you know, I guess just kind of looking for some guidance on what the commission wants to see. I mean, it is tricky because, you know, what happens if somebody builds a chouse and then they build a house? Or what if they build a chouse and then build another chouse? You know, where do we end? And it gets really tricky, you know, with our decision on the 1503. If we do make a chouse, a permitted structure, you can really build as many as you want as long as they meet the setbacks. And then that does kind of throw...
You could just build two, good job.
What's that?
With 1503, you can still only, you're limited to two.
Why would you be, I'm...
Isn't that...
Well, I mean, we've already had people say, well, if I build this as a chouse and then I build another chouse and then remove the bathroom, then it's not a chouse anymore and it's accessory structure. So I guess we're looking for guidance on what you guys, how you guys want to interpret this.
So the challenges to me are going to come from the R1, R2, R3. We're not talking egg because there's plenty of room. My shop has a toilet in it, so that's, but it's not really a chouse. I guess I could kick my husband down there, but it's not meant to be a chouse. So we're looking there, and we have accessory structure limitations. So I guess where I see a challenge is if you build a chouse and you're living in it as your house and your accessory structure, if you will, what's our limit for R1 right now?
Four thousand.
But you can add additional conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but without triggering that, do you count a portion of that chouse as your accessory structure? So say I've got, I've got a house and I've got a pretty good sized garage on it that we can park three cars, it's a little longer. Do you take something like that and say that's a regular garage? And if you're building a chouse and you've got the house portion, you've got what a regular garage would be, and if the other 2,000 foot would be your accessory structure? I know, I'm just talking out loud because if you're going to say your house is this huge structure, which technically right now you can build as big a house as you want to because we don't limit the size of the house.
And that's, I think, where we're seeking guidance because you could build a gigantic chouse and then in addition to that, build a 4,000 square foot accessory structure as a permitted use.
Yep.
And so that's kind of where we're at.
Like I said, this one's 4,320 already, plus a 200 square foot lean-to. And then, you know, where do we want to go from there?
I think my thoughts are as of today, as it's written, they have every, every right to build that accessory structure.
As it's written today. Now, if we need to start addressing it at the planning commission level to look at how to change the ordinance to address it, then we...
I think you would have to go something like you were, if your unfinished area is greater than your...
A regular garage.
Regular living area, then it meets, you'd have to find a definition and...
And that's the only reason I brought it up is just to start having that discussion of what, get a feel for where everybody might be and if we want to try and, try and change something down the line.
The other approach probably that has been done is if you have, if your lot size is supposed to be a half acre, would be 22,000 square feet roughly, and a certain percentage of that can be covered. Whether you build ten little sheds or you build one big shed, you have a certain percentage of the square foot that's covered. And that includes your house, your buildings, everything, anything beyond that gets a CUP.
So Gary, why don't we go to the Planning and Zoning Board and have you and them develop a proposal?
We'll certainly have that discussion. This just came up in this meeting was first, so I just wanted to throw it out there just to give everybody an idea of what's being requested and so we can move forward from there.
Yeah.
So the answer is then their permitted uses, I mean, that's kind of the guidance you're giving him is somebody comes in as a chouse, they can build it as big as they want as a permitted use as long as they meet the setbacks? Is that the guidance that we're giving him?
That's how the ordinance is written today.
The original or the accessory?
Okay, if I want to, I have, you know, five acres in R1 and I come in to build a chouse, I can build it as big as I want as long as it meets the setbacks, the 30-foot, 20-foot, 10-foot. There's no limit to the accessory size. And then in addition to the chouse in R1, they can then also build a 4,000 square foot accessory structure in addition to the chouse that's as big as they want it as a permitted use. So that's what we're saying. And if that's what we're saying, that's fine, but just we need to give him clear guidance because this is becoming an issue. And, you know, that's why he's here.
Is it a chouse or is it a machine shed with an apartment in it?
That's, what's the definition of a chouse? If it has a bed and a toilet and a sink, is it a, is it a chouse? These are, these are kind of exactly what we need to define for him on what we want to do.
Dan, in the last two months, we got in a bind discussion, conflict over Article 5 with the commission laying out what they wanted the Planning and Zoning Board to do. I say, Planning and zoning, you come up with a plan and present it to us.
That's, we can do that, but that's going to be mid-January before we even meet for the first time and it sounds like this is an issue. Well, I mean, you're running into this.
Yeah, he's requesting a permit.
This is somebody who's requesting a permit right now.
So I think long-term, we can do that, Don, and I have no problem taking...
Then it goes by the existing...
Exactly. And that was, that's definitely the direction it was going. I just wanted to make you aware that if you get questions on it, how this happened and things, which we seem to be getting a lot of, that that's the way it currently reads and that's the direction we're going. Thanks a lot.
Next I...
Five-minute break.
Uh, yes.
Make a motion for a five-minute break.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, a second by Kettering, for a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are on five-minute break.
You know, and I think it might be a good idea to reference the video in our minutes. And just put the link to the video in here on what it was said. You know, I think part of the motion is, you know, there's conditions that we added, but then there's also a lot of, you know, discussion on there as well. You know, when I say what it's based on, you know, I guess, I don't really know if that has to be a part of the motion. It was said in there, but I don't know. That's a requirement of the rezone, but I don't know if that needs to be in the motion.
If what needs to be in the motion?
Well, the comprehensive plan part.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, I would just say, you know.
Well, that hurts, does it?
Well, it depends on what we want to.
I'd say in this case, it's better that we include it.
Well, you know, and there's, there's other things prior to this too. Because Deb, I don't know if remember, we talked about, oh, what section is this? Section two thousand, two zero zero three, number fifteen, where we talked about in granting any petition for amendment or change in rezon, the county commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with this ordinance. I remember we discussed that as the ability to grant the amendment with conditions. And you remember us discussing that? I know it was a long night, but that was before that. And that would have been part of what I was referencing in the mo- in the motion.
You didn't say that in when you made your motion.
What we're doing is we're putting our blinders on and saying, we're only going to look at this part. But that's not really the whole thing because we had a discussion and several motions before that that I withdrew. And then came this motion. So we can't just draw a line in the sand and say, we're just going to look at this little part. We need to take a holistic view of the whole discussion because that's how the motion developed from the discussions we had. And the reason we have safeguards on this was because what the citizens requested, there was issues with potential flooding. And that's why there is a condition to help the tachys. And Mr. Rumsey came up and asked me to have lake access. That all went into this motion and it's what it was created. So, you know, I guess my concern is just referencing this short span of time really, you know, doesn't include the conversation that got us to here.
The other motion doesn't either.
Well, the conversation, the conversation does though, and the discussion does.
In this one?
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying the whole conversation. That's probably a good reason why we include the video clip in with it. In my opinion.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be pretty tough to include everything that was discussed and wasn't in the motion? Because the motion is what was acted on.
Because we discussed a lot of things that, that didn't make, that not everybody agreed on. So then you're opening yourself up for, well, but this was discussed, so that was in the motion too. But no, it wasn't. We didn't agree to that. So that's why motions need to be very clear when we make motions. So we know exactly what we're voting on and the applicant knows exactly what's being expected. So we have to go back to what was stated and what we all voted on.
Could we pull up the video clip? Let's all watch it. We should be able to do that. Because we're just going off of basically your interpretation.
Yep, my interpretation of, of stopping the video every two seconds and writing a word down, but.
But Sherry, and you're in, you're in opposition.
Gary, could you go out to the website and pull that up? Or Valley. Thank you. And I can tell you exactly where to go at to, at the start of the motion. So it's at three nineteen fifty-five. So about three nineteen.
There you go.
Yeah, that's probably good enough.
Pause it for a second. Is there a remote for that thing?
I'm satisfied unless anyone else wants to keep watching it.
So that was verbatim, and that matches what is written toward the bottom. And again, toward the top where the proposed language is, the only wording that's changed is to insert the one mile and the half mile in that. So essentially, what's being requested is to put that exact motion in the permanent record by opening up the minutes there.
I'd make a motion to open up the minutes from the November seventeenth, twenty twenty meeting for amendment.
Do I have a second? I have a second. So I have a motion to open the minutes for November seventeenth, twenty twenty for amendment. Motion by Healy, second by Kettering. So these minutes are open. Now I need a motion to amend these minutes with the language that I have read a couple of times here. And that's, again, that's toward the top of the sheet of paper you have. And it's word for word with the half mile and the one mile included.
Commissioner Loz, you have to vote on your first motion.
Oh, well, thanks, Don. I'm getting way ahead of myself. Okay. Now I'm really embarrassed on this one. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay.
Aye.
So I, I have four ayes and one nay. So motion carries. He, he said aye.
Yeah.
Yep.
So what? Dan voted nay?
Yes, Dan voted nay. Okay, so thank you for correcting me there, both of you.
I guess my question, are we going to do this on every single motion that we do it? Or is it just this project we're going to do this for? I mean, because we've done, you know, I'm, I'm sure not every motion we've ever done has been perfectly written down. And it just seems like we're treating this one so much different than we do everything else. So it's a concern I have.
Concern noted. So at this time, I need a motion to amend those minutes.
So move.
You want to clarify, I guess, amend it to the.
To the proposed language?
To, yeah.
Yes.
But you've got, I'll second that.
So I have a motion to amend the November seventeenth, twenty twenty minutes with the proposed language presented here. And I have a second by Healy. Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to abstain. I haven't had a chance to talk with the state's attorney's office on this, and I know you guys have. And so I guess I, this is all new to me and I don't really understand why we're doing it. So I'm going to abstain from the vote.
We were doing under guidance of the.
Yeah, I, I mean, and you guys, you guys were able to get the guidance from the state's attorney's office. I, I wasn't at the meeting.
Deb just built in those, if this is what he was guided with.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Gary, did you want to vote aye or nay? All right, thank you. Yep, I can hear you now. Thank you, sir. And Dan, you don't want to vote nay, you want to abstain?
I'm abstaining.
So I have four ayes and I have one abstained. So the November seventeenth minutes have been amended with the language presented on your sheet.
How adults, uh, we also discussed putting the, the link to the video in that. Are we going to do that?
No, we didn't. So now Deb, do we need to have a motion to close the minutes or do we need to now just re-adopt the minutes? Motion to approve the, the amended minutes?
I'd say, I'd say I'll make a motion to close the amended minutes from November twelfth, never, November seventeenth meeting.
Did we want to reference the video in these? I know they said it wasn't a bad idea to do that.
I wouldn't because we don't reference it in anything else.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor to close the amended minutes for November seventeenth. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Healy and a second by Kettering to close the amended minutes for November seventeenth for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay?
Can I abstain again?
Motion carries four to zero with Clemish abstaining. All right, that concludes item fifteen. We are now at item sixteen. Salary matrix adoption. We'll do it when we do commissioner updates. So on December first, in that packet, we presented a salary matrix. There was a couple, there were two versions of it. In your packet for this meeting is an adjusted version. So if you care, you can open up both packets, both December first and December fifteenth. The one for this meeting shows some changes to the state's attorney's office matrix classification. I had a chance to talk a little closer with that department on there. They hadn't given a huge amount of input before that. And I sent that update out to these, to you guys as well, kind of let you know what was going on there. So that is in your new packet. The other thing that was changed where we talked about the guidelines and the red that is in the guidelines were some requested changes. At the last meeting, there was some concern with number two in the general of the original one. So essentially, I just took it out. And item number six just added, all job descriptions shall be approved by the county commission. There were some questions there. And then on that second page, having to do with the promotions, initial placement into the matrix, et cetera. Some of the things we talked about for those areas. So those are all shown in red, so you can easily see what was changed. The last thing that was supplied, and this came after our December first meeting, was I did ask Nancy Winandy at YEPG, she offered to try to get us some salary studies, some comparisons for Yankton and forty-five miles outside of Yankton and then on the average of South Dakota as well. So I did my best to find the codes that I felt aligned with some of the positions we have here in the county. And you can see the hourly rates that YEPG provided on the two right-hand columns. And then some of the numbers from the proposed matrix for Yankton County. When you see a span, that kind of entails, as for example, lawyers, just a starting lawyer up to a more advanced lawyers, deputy state's attorney, et cetera. Jailers, the same thing. You have a starting jailer and then you have maybe someone who oversees other jailers at that top end of that range. So, and those are all mid-ranges, so that'd be about five years in. Not a beginning, not an ending, about a five years in. And overall, we compare pretty good with that data. Some of our positions are a little higher. I'm struggling here to see any that are, the lawyers are a little below. But everybody else, for the most part, is right where you would think they should be or slightly higher. I didn't see any overall huge concerns with those numbers. It's certainly a good gut check to make sure we're in the right range. So.
But not all are on that.
Yeah.
No.
It would have been nice to have, you know, like highway department and ambulance and some of those.
The, and forgive me, there should have been an ambulance one on there. But there, there isn't a code for a county treasurer. So sometimes you have to look for like a, an accountant, for example. So that, that's going to be a treasurer's and accountant. They didn't have a specific code for county highway superintendent. So I had to search for something that I felt might be in that range. Sheriff's, obviously, there, that's pretty common across the nation. So detective, supervisors of patrol officers and patrol. I mean, they didn't have sheriff deputy listed, so.
Doesn't District Three or, and the association, they do that wage study every few years, don't they?
Every two years, yep. And you each have a copy of that. And it's, it's about a hundred pages long. And going through there, I did that earlier this year with our department's leaders. So that was provided probably about April or May. And it showed that most of our positions at that level were in the range of similar counties, except our highway department and our office of emergency management at that time. And that kind of kicked off the need for a matrix system because it was felt at that time, we can't handpick who we're going to address and who we're not. So out of that came this effort across the county.
I guess one, one of the issues I see when I sat down with the department heads and, and they were in agreeance with it, really has to do with our deputies and our chief deputies. And I guess when we first started doing this, one of the main concerns was to try to get a little more balance in some of those departments. And so I went along with it when the department heads were satisfied. But if you look at what was proposed to what we have now, specifically with chief deputies and deputies, they've both been dropped down one level, which might not seem like a lot, but I mean, it, the potential is, you know, around $4,000 lost wages. And I guess, I'm wondering why, you know, some offices, the deputy and chief deputy were removed, well, knocked down, I guess, a rung. And I guess I don't, I don't understand why that happened.
Yep. So as I stated, in the December first packet, if you open that up and you go to that one, that is at your fingertips to look at that. This one was updated. I took the one I had proposed and updated it with the state's attorney's request. So I didn't touch the other one. Now, the reason that my version has the chief deputies and the, and the deputies for the auditor, the registered deeds and the treasurer, all at fives and sixes. And you're looking at the deputy director of equalization at a nine. We base this system on Brookings. And those are the exact same codes that Brookings used as well. So the salaries are lined up there. Now, one thing I will say is those departments are all based on a thirty-five hour week and Brookings is based on forty. So right now, we're going to be paying comparable here for thirty-five hours a week what Brookings is paying their folks for forty. So that is a little bit different between Brookings and Yankton. When I looked at Lincoln County, their deputies for auditor, registered deeds and treasurer were three grades below the deputy of equalization as well. And they just had their study done a year or two ago, their whole, they paid a firm to come in and do a wage matrix study for $40,000. And that's what they had come up with. Now, I'm certainly not saying that we have to do what Sherry wants to do.
What's, what's the reasoning? I mean, I know you said this is what Brookings does, but I guess we're not Brookings. So what's Yankton's reason for, you know, lowering the deputies in that organization? Because.
And I, and I'll tell you this.
When I spoke with the department heads, you know, we all agreed on one thing and, you know, now it's changed. So I'm just wondering why.
So this is, this is essentially where we started. And there were requests for some positions to move up a grade. And that is included in your packet for you to see what those requests were. And then I went back to what the original was as well. We've got essentially two deputies in auditor, treasurer and registered deeds. We have one deputy in equalization. Now, we can certainly put another deputy in equalization and, and move those around a little bit as well. So that's a difference. And the equalization requires certification and other training for that department. And that's, that's part of the reason there's a difference.
So was it based on, you know, budget and a number of people that each department has or what, what was it? What was the, the main basis on the departments? Was, was it the number of people supervised and, and the budget in dollars?
That plays into all of them across.
And, and when you do that, you know, you, you can't just look at the budget or the number. I mean, for example, the, the auditor's office with elections. If they make a mistake, we're going to make national headlines for that. And so I, I think we need to recognize, you know, you know, some of the departments, you know, auditor's office for the specialized things they do with pay and helping out with questions with, you know, HR. And then the treasurer's office has probably the most interaction with the public out of any office. Everybody, twice a year, maybe more, is going to go to the treasurer's office. And they have to deal with some pretty irate people sometimes when they have to pay their taxes. And so there's a lot of customer service there and register a deeds office having to make sure each one of those documents is, you know, as error-free as it can be. So I guess I, you know, I, I struggle when, when it's based off of the budget and those three departments are elected officials and, you know, Brian's here. I don't think I could find $5 where I could cut from your department because it is that precise. And I could say that about the auditor and treasurer as well. And so I, I think there's a level of responsibility there. And we need to realize that those jobs are very important and vital too. And like I said at the beginning, one of the reasons we was doing this was to, you know, kind of move some of the deputies a little closer together and not get them so far out. And by reducing those three departments, we're getting back to where we were.
I guess my understanding of the reason, one of the main reasons of the salary ma- matrix was to set up a system that was deemed to be fair by the department heads. And they all had input on this, one. Two, so that we were competitive in the area, so that we were paying and providing a, a, a package to our employees that would keep them motivated to stay, to stay with us and do the job. And, and three, do what you're talking about, Dan. Have some kind of a, of a understanding that, you know, the deputy, the deputy sheriff or they, they go out and could get you out. That, that means something. That's probably worth some pay. And one of the things that, that I've always looked at when I've been in employment is I look at the salary matrix and, and say, well, shoot, if, if I want to be a grade fifteen, this is what I got to do. I got to go to one of these jobs. And that's how it's laid out. And that's how I get there.
There's not much turnover in every offices.
And then.
Lowering some of these deputies from what they were and not lowering another deputy, I mean, that's not, we're getting back to the same month, same thing we were, we have right now.
I think there was some.
I'm just not hap- you know, I'm not happy with this for my staff.
Part of that intent was to kind of balance that and not necessarily balance. I wouldn't say balance pay exactly. A deputy shouldn't always make what a deputy does based off, like you were saying, Don, training and different things. But as I'm looking at this, there is, if you look at the, the gap to move from a, a chief deputy auditor to an auditor, goes from a six to an eleven. Same with registered deeds, same with treasurer. So that's a pretty good hike between positions. Equalization, it's two, it's going from a nine to an eleven. And so I think maybe we do need to look at that if some of those are out of whack. If, even if that deputy goes to an eight, from an eight to eleven or, but to get some sort of a.
So what you're saying is to move the deputy director of equalization down one notch to an eight?
And move ours, the register of deeds and all that up to where they should be, I think.
I, I'm fine, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Joe. I'm fine with leaving people where they are. But I, I do think, you know, deputy auditor and, and treasurer and registered deeds. and, and treasurer and registered deeds, you know, it, it's not a perfect comparison, those three departments, because they have specific missions that are different. But they're probably the three most alike departments that we have. And so I think it would be fair to have the chief deputies for all of those three at a seven and the deputies at a six, like what was originally agreed upon by the department heads. I, I could live with that. I'm, I'm not saying reduce any other deputy down, because there is a difference in responsibility. And we understand that, but we also, when somebody joins one of these departments, we have a lot of longevity in there. And you're, you're not going to get somebody who, you know, starts as a, as a clerk in the auditor's office and, and then, you know, probably jumps over to a, a deputy in another department. That, that doesn't happen that often, so.
So when we had this discussion two weeks ago, I think Sherry gave us all assignment of reviewing it and emailing her the proposed changes that we should, we should take place. Did we all do that?
Yeah, I, I got a lot of feedback recently, and so I guess that's, I'm bringing it here this evening.
So the, yep, come on.
I want to make a few points. Don, you're absolutely right. The department heads did have public input during the meetings. We had meetings all through October and November. But that public input is not reflected in this latest scale, which dropped the chief deputy and deputy positions to six and five. All during our meetings in October, November, when we were giving input, those were at seven and six. And we all thought that's where we were. And then we looked at this over the weekend and see that was changed, and we never consulted about that. You know, all, we're talking about four offices here, the registered deeds, treasurer, auditor, and director of equalization. These have all been very four similar offices in the county. They're all links in a chain. No one of those links is more important than the other. We all have important work. And it really feels to some of us like the director of equalization office has gotten much better treatment in the last number of years, and we don't understand why that occurred. I know there was a grievance from the deputy in the director of equalization office that yielded him a large raise. But I just want to say, when I left the commission, when I left the commission 14 years ago, the chief deputies in those offices all made roughly the same, and the deputies and the department heads and all, all that. Now, as of right now, and by the way, dropping the equalization deputy to an eight doesn't work, because he's already getting paid like a nine, so.
Brian, are you here?
I got to finish this, Don. This is important. So right now, the top deputy in the equalization office is making, I want to say, $58,000. And the top deputy in the other three offices is making about $40,000. So all of a sudden, what was once a very similar ranking as far as pay is now $18,000 difference. Now, by making this change we talked about in October and November, that wouldn't close that gap. It would narrow it a little bit. I mean, we're never going to catch up to that nine if we're sevens, but it would narrow it a little bit, and it would help morale. Whereas if you leave it at six and five, I, we have not achieved our goal of balance, of achieving more balance.
So now, now can I ask you the question I was going to ask? You're telling me that in your mind, all jobs on the market are equal. Everybody should get paid the same amount-
No, I don't think-
For being a deputy.
No, not a deputy sheriff, not a deputy state's attorney. But these four offices have always been treated the same.
Well, that doesn't mean nothing.
But all of a sudden-
What are, what are all the other counties in the, in the area doing?
Well, I'm, I'm talking about Yankton County. I'd be surprised if there was-
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. We're trying to get something that's equalized, equal and fair according to what other job markets are doing in the area.
Right now, the deputy in the equalization office is at grade nine, step, is it 10 or 11? And the other people who would basically be at a grade six are at step one or two. I mean, that, what, what is that all about? They've all been here basically the same number of years, within 11 to 13 years.
So one thing I-
I'm not begrudging anybody what they make, but I thought it would really be good for morale and for our deputies and our chief deputies to see that one change where they moved into the seven and six spots. We're never going to catch the other office I keep comparing us to, but it would make it a little bit more palatable.
So I do want to clarify one thing. At the beginning, I said in the December 1st packet, that pull those out, and that was the department head's request, and then I made changes to the state's attorneys on mine. So I do want to make that clear.
But the last meeting we had, we were still, all through October, November, including the last meeting in November, we had it at sevens and sixes.
And-
And nobody was aware-
And in December 1st, it was listed as sevens and sixes, along with one of mine of where we started.
The auditor, treasurer, registered deeds were never involved in that.
That both were included in the December 1st packet?
That the grades had changed since our meeting.
And that was included in the December 1st packet? If you go back and, and your request is in the December 1st packet, along with where we started, and the difference was explained. So the commissioners would understand where we started with Brookings and what was being requested. And we discussed that at the last meeting very clearly.
Well, I, I maybe you don't understand the numbers I was sharing, but if, if we leave it like it is, with the deputy and chief deputy at six and fives, we haven't improved the situation one bit. We've hurt morale even worse than it was.
And that is up for discussion. Back to the commissioners. So do we need more time to, to look through this, or do we have opinions that want to be shared tonight?
Sure. I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead, Gary.
Um, you said the equalization, somebody was making $58,000 a year. What did, what does a deputy sheriff make right now?
They're saying-
Go to your last meeting packet and look at the-
Start at $48,103 in top salary, being proposed is 61,006.
So-
Well, Don, Don mentioned something about a deputy sheriff. You know, you can go out and, you can end up getting shot in line of duty. But there's also another factor, the factor is, deputy, deputy sheriffs, sheriffs, they work weekends, holidays, nights, shifters. And, and these other officers don't. People are a lot spited that somebody should be making $58,000 in an office job, I'm working at a five, and somebody operates in a line. Now, I'm going to tell you what, routine, routine calls, like delivering papers to somebody's house, are the most dangerous jobs when you're a deputy sheriff or a law enforcement officer. Well, I'd just like to stress that, that I, I believe that that needs to come up. And as far as having more time to discuss it, I don't believe it's ready for a vote tonight.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
You know, another issue that I see is looking at the ambulances, there's a huge gap between the administrator and the senior paramedic, like seven, seven steps. You know, that just seems like, it either tells me that the senior paramedic is not paid enough, or the ambulance administrator is paid too much. But I mean, why is there such a big gap there? Have we, have we looked at other ambulances? I know there's not a lot of them. And if that's what they're paying, that's fine. But I, I just, seeing that gap, when we fill that position, I mean, if somebody is the senior paramedic, they're making 36, starting, potential for $45,000. And if they get, you know, if they get promoted to the administrator, they're, basically they're paid doubles. And you would think that there would either be something in the middle there, or one of those two numbers is not where they should be. So do we have anything to compare that with, with other counties or other cities?
Not with me. Had you asked that question during the last two weeks, I could have found something for you.
You know, and-
I think on that one, too, Mr. Hawkins had some input there. And I think a lot of that is what, one, what the market will bear, and two, I think when you factor overtime in the, the scheduling that they do, that's part of how that's justified.
Well, and, and something that I, I did mention last meeting that we're not considering is county vehicles. You know, we do, you know, that department has, head has a vehicle that they drive, and is that added in, in addition to this pay? Or is that, I mean, that is a definite perk, having a vehicle. So how do we incorporate that? Because the, the true cost or true benefit is, is higher than that.
But if he didn't have a county vehicle to drive, then he would drive his personal vehicle, and we would pay him to do that. Same goes with-
Well, I guess I'd, I'd, I'd wonder, you know, to, to look at, because I know the deputies, none of the deputies drive their vehicles home with them, deputy sheriffs. And I guess I'd look at how many times, you know, at the off time, have, have off-duty hours, you responded to an ambulance incident in the past year? And if that number is high, yes, okay, that justifies it. But if it's one or two times, we would be better off with county resources to pay him mileage for his own vehicle, rather than insurance and fuel and maintenance and tires, because that vehicle is a cost to the county just to sit there. And we need to be looking at areas we can save the county tax dollars. And that might be one to look at. Maybe it won't amount to anything, but maybe it will. So I think it's something that should be looked at.
Don, I'll go back to your comment or question, you know, if we offered input or insight to Sherry in the last, since the last meeting. I just want to say, for one, I think the department heads put a lot of effort into this, and I appreciate that. I know Sherry's put a lot of effort into it. I appreciate that, much more than I have. This is a daunting task. No matter what, there's going to be people upset. I think we need to do what we can to, to make things right. I think everyone agrees, the reason we're doing this is things were getting out of balance. And so with that being said, I'll, to address your question, I did not put, I gave Sherry feedback on what this was, but I did not suggest many changes. And when, when we looked at the shifting of those positions, I had kind of talked with her about it, and it was, part of the scope of this was the, the Brookings pay is what we were looking closely at. Not saying that's set in stone, but it, it made sense. It, you know, it, okay, I can follow the logic there. I did receive a call from Brian and talked to him a little bit, and I certainly appreciate the, I guess, the conversation and, and where he comes from. And, you know, I, I think we probably can get a little closer on some of these things. I know we were hoping to get solution tonight, maybe we still can, but it doesn't sound like everybody's quite there.
Well, if we put it on the, the agenda for December 29th, I expect feedback before December 29th at where everybody thinks things should be.
Well, my feedback right now is I think the, the auditor's office and treasurer and, and registered deeds, that they need to go back to, the deputy and chief deputy need to go back to where they were originally at a seven and a six. That would be a, a big thing. I need, I think we need to look at the, you know, the ambulance and, and figure out why there's such a big gap in there and, and see how we, if we'd save the county tax dollars by paying mileage versus a vehicle.
That's a, that's a separate deal from a wage matrix. Because if you're going to look at one, you look at all.
And I guess I'd like to see some similar rates for, you know, like the highway department and, just to make sure we're competitive. And I know you've seen a lot of this stuff, Sherry, that, like I haven't seen. You, you probably compared that. I'd just like to reference how we stand with the surrounding counties, you know, of Bon Home and Hutchinson and Turner County. Because it's, it's important to, yes, look at similar-sized counties, but I think it, it provides a benefit to look at neighboring counties as well. And I, I know we did make a change to the deputy state's attorney, and I think we all agree, she does a great job. My only concern is that our last deputy state's attorney almost never came to any of our meetings. Deb does a great job. She's always there, offered good advice. But if we get somebody else in that position and they never attend meetings, is that same salary justified? Certainly for Deb it is, but for the next person, is it? I don't know. We appreciate all, that she comes to all these meetings, and I can support her in
Trying to find something here, but what I'm looking at is where, with, with the current proposal, where, let's say, the deputy auditor, where they all lot, what step do they lay in, do they meet? I know I've got that somewhere.
I know one deputy auditor is well below where she should be. The other one is about in there as far as treasurer's office. I'm struggling to remember the exact, and I didn't bring my other computer with me. Registered deeds were about where, well, it depends on what grade you use. And so was equalization.
The one thing I'm looking for won't pull up on my-
So what are, what are the main qualities that are different between a chief deputy and a deputy?
We are one of the few counties that have two.
Well, so, so I could see moving the chief deputy up, but then I question, in, in, in a small work group, why do we need the chief deputy, a deputy, and the main person? If you're growing somebody to take over the job down the road, fine. And it does appear, I, I, I don't know whether it fits in, but it does appear that all the, all the positions that we're discussing here tonight are elected positions. We're not talking about county employees. We're talking about elected decision-
Not the, not the deputies.
Not the deputies.
They're not elected.
But the top person is.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just talking about the deputies.
Well, I think it all fits together. You're talking about the jobs that they do and where they fit in and what, what they should be at, and, you know, I-
So at this time, I, I don't think we're going to come to resolution tonight. Like I said, I would request that you each truly look at this and send me your thoughts. I know some of you shared them again, but I would appreciate you emailing, emailing your thoughts to me, and I will put those all together for the 29th. Does that seem reasonable?
It's fine with me.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we will close this one out. We are at public comment. There's some up there. Okay. Thank you. Matt Evans.
Hello, I'm Matt Evans. Honestly, I wasn't prepared to talk. I just kind of wanted to hear what everybody else kind of was thinking. I noticed there's a lot of people here that wanted to talk. I don't know if it has to do with the decision, what was made. I guess I was kind of confused on the controversy that was kind of going on with the decision. I thought it was pretty straightforward myself, I guess, as far as just changing the minutes. I think you said, Sheri, the only thing that was added or edited was the, oh, shoot, the half mile up and one mile down, which I had no issue with doing that. Was there something else, Dan, that you didn't like in it?
We're not allowed to comment right now.
Oh, you're not, okay, sounds good. I guess that was my concern. If there was something else that I didn't understand. My lawyer is currently quarantined. She is on the Zoom or whatever, but I tried talking to Deb today to see if she could comment, but some people said that she might not be able to comment if she's not here. So I guess as far as the minutes and everything, everything sounded good to me. I know that there was concerns on maybe two different plans, I think Gary said, on the last one. But I only remember submitting one plan to the, is it the Board of Adjustments? Is that right?
County Commission.
County Commission, I'm sorry. So I guess if there's any questions on that, I don't know if I can even answer them later or what, but I just want to be here basically to answer anybody's questions, if they have any, or whatever it is, just so we keep a straight record. That's all I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carrie Rumsey.
Hi, I was just going to finish what my husband had started, just to kind of, the last, sure, that he was not able to finish. And like I say, guys, once again, we're trying to make sure that Matt is, is fair as well, as he, that we're all being fair to him and to us. Like I said, if he's not sure of the motion, if you're not sure of the motion, if we're not sure of the motion, I think we all need to know what is expected. So our final argument was the final motion to approve the plan, which we, which was ambiguous and not consistent with the spirit of discussion between all parties leading up to the motion that was made and ultimately approved. This is evidenced by the fact, one month and two county commission meetings later, we are still trying to come up with a clear motion to approve. In closing, I just want to reiterate that we have submitted solid arguments that compel Yankton County State's Attorney's Office to process the appeal, Action 20509C, in hopes the planned unit development and rezoning application will be sent back to Planning County, excuse me, Yankton County Planning Commission for reconsideration. As of tonight, it is our understanding that the petition was received, once again, by the State's Attorney Office, reviewed and sent to the Attorney General's Office for consideration. The Attorney General's Office summarily sent it back to the State's Attorney Office, stating it was a State's Attorney's issue, and they must review it and determine it has merit and proceed accordingly. It is our current understanding the petition is still under consideration by the Yankton County State's Attorney Office. This is what I want to reiterate. We humbly ask that you review the petition, and if you feel it has merit, ask the State's Attorney Office to process the appeal and grant our request for the application to be reconsidered properly. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you. And Neil Lane? Yeah, go ahead. Are you good? Okay, wonderful, not a problem. Anyone else care to make a public comment? All right, public comment is closed. We are now at COVID-19 Commissioner Swenson.
Thank you, Sheri. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can.
All right. So not to mention that COVID-19 has been on everybody's mind, but it's also called the China virus. It could be also called Europe war virus. You know, shortly after World War II, we had a common enemy, and that was Russia. And that went on for years and years. We went through the Cold War, and it was always fear, fear of being annihilated by atomic weapons. We've never had, we were on this land, we've been through war, and it's probably arrived with kind of concise. We were here in the place when World War II, Korea, Vietnam, all the troops were activated and drafted, sent over to us. You know, people at home suffered a little bit with gas rationing in the, in World War II, and and some shortage of, mostly deaths from Vietnam. This COVID-19 affects everybody, not just United States, but it's worldwide, except, except China. China's schoolchildren are in school. You can, you can look it up anyplace. Our children, in and out of school, mask, no mask. draconian type mayors and governors, cherry pick, what they want to do to people, confuse and fear. It escalated, actually, like President Trump said, the cure is worse than the symptoms. Now, President Trump has done excellent jobs with what he's done, with those teeth, vaccine, distribution. It's just come out in the last couple of days. I commend him highly. Like I said, in China, children are scared. China became our enemy there. In Vietnam, China was our enemy there, along with Russia. Now China is our enemy with this COVID-19. The fear I've seen in people that I've known all my life, I was born here in 1950, and I've never seen anything like it. Old people, young people confused, along with leaders in big cities, making one decision one day to close a church, but let another company stay open, close a bar, close a small business. But Walmart's open, you can come in there and eat and buy things, but you can't go to church. The small business has always been the backbone of this company, of this country. And these draconian style mayors and governors, except ours, and I have to give Governor Ngom credit, even though I've been critical of her at times, she left things alone. Now, you can argue with me all day about it, but one size doesn't fit all. West River is not the same as East River. New York City, Washington DC, Yankton Substate are not the same. I've been to Washington DC twice. I know what kind of a creepy place that is. It is, it is a swamp. Yeah, and I'd like to see a change, but that's going to take a while. These mandates for masks, you know, it's probably okay, but you know what? It's a hundred year old technology for the Spanish flu. Now, when I was in the military, you didn't, you didn't wear a paper mask like this. You wore gas masks for tear gas and biological, chemical and nuclear radiation. The division of families, what this has caused with people in old people's homes, they can't, can't see their families. And I heard somebody say, I think it was, Mr. Healy, Mr. Healy, that this is a daunting task for all the nurses and doctors. Well, you know what? That's what they signed on for. And I know it probably isn't very nice, but when you sign up for the military, it probably isn't very nice either, unless you get a nice cushy job in some office. Some guy laid in a trench or in a rice paddy. So, so you can't sit there and defend one person and not the other. And we're all in this together, and we can't be divided, because divided, we fall. United, we stay together and say it. And grandparents, like I said, our grandparents, my parents went through the wars, the depression, 1929 collapse of the economy, and this is what, this is what China is trying to do. They're trying to collapse our economy, not just ours, the world, because they want to take over the dollar system. And if they can get away with that, which seems like they're doing a pretty good job. One other thing about COVID-19, one of the first victims of COVID-19 was a relative of mine, Mike Pappick. And it was really emphasized that Mike was one of the first victims of COVID-19. Well, he did have COVID-19, but he came home from the Tufts Hospital, and he was, and he was cured. But I would say, what? He came over to my house about a year before, and he had, he needed a kidney. So it wasn't just COVID-19 that killed him, but it was not explained that he had needed to have a kidney. And I didn't like what our mayor did to it. But anyway, I won't say anything more bad about our mayor. But anyway, I have another family member that had COVID-19. Normally good health, not sick or anything, came out of it, not, not, not any worse, maybe less worse than the normal flu. So the fear factor that the Chinese are throwing into our country and throwing into the world is enormous. We've got to settle down, we've got to stick together, we've got to pray, we've got to get over this fear. I know that people think the mask and the distancing is good, and it probably is, but even the expert scientists can't agree on it. And then they change their mind back and forth, back and forth. This Yoshi guy that's been working with Trump, he countered it in his own self. So stay together, pray, and don't be fearful of this. We've gotten through a lot worse things than this.
Thanks, Gary.
Can I ask you why you're at home, Gary?
So, thank, thank you.
This is my side, this is my few minutes. You can put your name on, on next time on the agenda. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We are at Commissioner Updates. Does anyone have anything they want to share?
Well, last Friday, Sheri and I met with a group of people and discussed a topic called JDAI. And you were also with us. And it's a process in attempting to reduce the, well, increase the recidivism rates on juveniles that are sometimes sent to prison or have other types of administrative processes put on them. And I think we're going to go forward with that and at least explore it a little more. So it looks like a good program.
JDAI.
JDAI, juvenile detention alternative initiative.
Initiative, yep. Four other counties have it right now, and it's been successful. So, anything else?
Nope.
Joe? Dan?
Yeah, today I went to Olivet and met with the Hutchinson County Commissioners, and they wrote up a resolution of support for our bridge replacement for Stone Church, and it was unanimous, and they're definitely behind us. And I contacted Mike, added it to the packet, and hopefully that'll help us get that bridge replaced. Next thing I got, and I did talk to Sheri about it, our Board of Health that we have set up, I don't, I think it goes to the end of the year, but for our next meeting, I would propose that maybe we extend it to our first meeting in January. I'd hate to have it go away and then we have to set it back up. So I'd like that on the next agenda. And then something to discuss, quick, Jeff, our, Fifeley, our maintenance guy, had proposed adding some touchless hand motions to the doors. His reasoning is, is guys are constantly wiping them down throughout the day. I don't know if it's something we want to do installed. It's about $4,000. And if we're interested in it, I'll have him get some more quotes. If we're not interested, that's fine, but he seemed like he was concerned about it. That's up to the, if anybody's against it, let me know, otherwise I'll have him present something at the next meeting.
Does that, does that replace putting our hand sanitizer out there?
Well, I think what, and I just ran into him in the hall one day, I think what he's saying is his guys are, you know, constantly wiping it down as they should, and it's, they're not getting to the other things that they should-
Talking automatic doors?
Yes, he's talking, so where you walk up, it opens-
Like these out here, like at a grocery store?
Yeah, something similar to that, and I, I can have him give us more detail if there's any interest. If we're absolutely no, then we won't go any further, but that's something he thought was important.
Is that to read, instead of like the handicap button, is that what?
Yeah, I don't think you push that. I think it, it just is a sensor.
So you walk up and it's a sensor, it'll open and close. And I have witnessed quite often, our handicap people in wheelchair, they have a tough time hitting that and then making it through the door, and so if there's no objection, I'll have him or Joe can, because he's really, he's going to put something together and we can vote on it at the next meeting. That's all I have, thank you.
The Conservation Board has extended an offer to a person, so at our next meeting, we need to approve that hiring. Don and I did meet with a Lincoln County Commissioner. He was actually excited when we told him about JDAI and thought maybe it would be a good topic for our next eight county commission meeting, that essentially Yankton County would share what we know about the program, et cetera. I have a call with our three legislators on Thursday, along with Amy Leon. So if there's anything you would like me to share with them, pass it along via email or text or phone call. It's just going to be a general update before session starts. And again, our last meeting is December 29th at 10:00 AM. We already have Board of Health extension, conservation position approval. We have to assign the CRF dollars we've received. We're going to have an update on FEMA from Mike. And then the property insurance and liability insurance, so those are things already on that last meeting. So with that, I don't have anything, anything else to update.
I think we need to check the County Board of Health. I'm pretty sure we did, when we set that up, it went to the first meeting.
It could be, Joe.
After the first of the year, I think, but-
I just don't recall. And if it does, that's great. I just would hate to have it go away.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and Gary, Gary Swenson, are you still with us?
I'm still here, Sheri. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can. Patty needs you to come in and sign the resolution for the buffer strips. They cannot send it to the state unless you sign it, because you voted for it. So, yep, so if you could get in tomorrow sometime, that'd be great. Just a quick signature and you'll be on your way. Thank you. Or the next day. But they can't send it to the state unless you sign it.
We scan it and email it to them?
So, thank you. So at this time, we have executive session for personnel issue. South Dakota qualified law 125, two subpart one, and poor relief issues. Law 125-2, Subpart 1, and poor relief issues, which is 125-228-13 and 28-13 1.3. So I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for those.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy, to go into executive session. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. All right. Go ahead and hit your microphone there, Don. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, to come out of executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. We are now back in regular session.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to pay $1,250 for burial expenses for case number one.
Second.
I have a motion by Clemish, second by Kettering, to approve burial expenses for case number one. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. I think we already kind of covered what, some of the things for next meeting, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
The motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries four zero. We are adjourned.